Good evening. I will call this meeting to order tonight. And if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And now if we'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And tonight, the first item on our agenda, oh, I'm sorry, the admission statement will be read by Lyle Schmidt, board member tonight.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Lyle. And one change on our agenda, board, and for our viewing public is Item G on page forty, the negotiations with Durham for a one-year extension of contract. If at all, if there are no objections, we would like to move that up under the consent agenda. If that is okay with all board members?
I, yeah.
Okay, so we will move Item G on page forty up after the consent agenda.
This is just to start, the request to start negotiations, that's all, right? That's all it says?
Once we get to the item, we'll discuss it, yeah, whatever the-
No, we won't, it's under consent agenda, that's what I'm asking.
No, under the item after, yeah, not on, after, right after the consent agenda. So it'd be after Item D, yeah, yeah, no, no, just moving it up on the agenda. Yes, okay, perfect. That, we will do that then. Kingsley will get that taken care of. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent is recommending that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge with gratitude the $4,050 donation from Nazareth Lutheran Church to benefit musical programs and classroom projects at Highland Elementary.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay. Could I get a-
So move.
And a second, thank you very much. And we have Aqui here and Carrie from Highland, I believe. Awesome. Awesome. Good, good. So can you explain a little bit about this wonderful donation?
I could tell that Pam was looking in the back of the room and didn't realize that I'd already started making my way up here, so I apologize for that. Yeah, so just wanted to share a little bit about the donation, just over $4,000. And you'll be able to tell us more about what the funds will be used for in terms of the music instruments and so on.
So Nazareth Lutheran is actually one of our partners. They came to us with this opportunity to let us really choose the things that we needed. Our music teacher needed some new instruments, some of those replaced, sorry. So she will be getting those. We're also going to get some tools for our teachers to use to help build up their classroom and do some organization within their classroom. So we're really excited and we're really grateful for this opportunity.
Great. What, like what things did you purchase?
So actually, we're going to get two cricket machines along with vinyl and paper so the teachers can print out those things and print out labels and do that type of thing. We're also getting some stuff for our teacher's lounge. So we have matching plates and silverware and things that make the teachers feel a little bit appreciated.
Music in the elementary school is so important, giving those kids an outlet and to move around and to start feeling the beat before they may be in music programs in junior high and high school. That's really great.
Yep, and our music teacher, Sarah Lyons, really tries to give the kids every opportunity to be hands-on so the more instruments she has, the more kids can participate in that.
Do you happen to know, is this a special collection or special fundraiser that, where these monies came from, or just a general?
It's a grant opportunity through Nazareth. It's a grant they give out to their parish as well that they can apply for, but they came to us to apply for part of those funds. So we were granted some of those funds.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. And if you would please take- Sorry, please take our gratitude back to Nazareth Lutheran because that's wonderful and just what a great opportunity for the kids and teachers and staff, just to all in one, a great gift, so.
Yes, I definitely will, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Carrie, is there anyone here from the church? If they are, I just wanted to recognize them if there is.
No, no, Barb's not here tonight, nope.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So all in favor of approving the motion to accept the $4,050, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. And also, we wanted to recognize tonight that we do have a class here this evening. So seeing how board governance is going on, so we appreciate you coming tonight. And if you have questions afterwards, if you stay to the end, I'm sure any of the board members or staff would be very willing to talk to you. So thank you for attending tonight.
Are they going to grade us?
Please don't.
Make sure it's on a curve.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, a timed test.
A timed test, okay, yeah.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is information for individuals and delegations. This is the opportunity where those who wish to address the school board may do so. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer, to my left, will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining and a red card when your time is expired. At that time, I will ask you to please conclude your public remarks. Also, keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. And also, please avoid criticizing the job performance of any specific employee of the district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in this public forum. Finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comments, but it generally is not a back-and-forth discussion, especially of items that are not on our agenda. At times, we will try to help if we can with information before or after this meeting, but we will have to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. With that, I would invite anyone who wishes to address the board this evening to please come forward and start by stating your name and your home address, and your three minutes will begin. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Am I loud enough? Am I too loud?
Is your green light on? Just make sure of that, thank you.
Okay. Hello, members of the board. I'm Nicole Presley. I live in Waterloo and I work in the Waterloo Schools. I'm speaking to you today to petition the board to reconsider their sick bank policy in regards to COVID-19. Last week, I was forced to miss three and a half days of school while waiting on a pending COVID test. My partner had tested positive and early on, I had mild symptoms. I wholeheartedly support the notion that sick staff and those awaiting results need to stay home so we can reduce the spread of COVID-19. However, I no longer have any sick days. I had surgery at the start of the year, which left me with none for the rest of the year. As a result of the ten-day policy, I was not permitted to use any time from the sick bank, though I did contribute to it and have for many years. That being said, I had to stay home on these days with no sick days, and these became unpaid days. If you're not aware, unpaid days are actually days resulting in a paid dock. Employees are docked their per diem pay for each day missed. This is an immense financial burden, especially considering the circumstances. For myself, my pay dock for one day for my per diem is $325.39. With three full days out and a half day on Tuesday while waiting on results, that means I will be docked a total of $1,138.87 on my next check. Maybe to some, that amount seems miniscule. But this amount of money is large to someone like me on a teacher's salary, and the effects are profound. This is a huge portion of my monthly check. This means I will have bills I cannot pay. This means I will have to rely on friends and family to get me through another month. This means more struggle, more stress, and more anxiety. And all because I had to stay home to protect and keep other people safe, including my kids. I know others could be in the same position as I am. We're living in a pandemic world and it's difficult to navigate it all. You have asked us repeatedly for grace, and tonight, I ask the same of you. I ask, if possible, I not be deducted this pay. But more importantly, ask that the board change the sick bank policy to include COVID-19 so this does not happen to others. So please, please consider altering your policy so that your staff, the people who are fighting day in and day out with you, can survive. It might be too late to recoup money for me, and I understand, but maybe this can change something for the future for someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the board? Remember, light on and state your name and address, thank you.
Green light is on, we're good. Hello, good evening. My name is Jody Baller and I am the president of the WEA. I reside at Crestline Avenue in Waterloo. On behalf of the members of the WEA and the Labor Management Teams for both the WEA and the WESP, we wanted to extend our thank you to you, the board, for using the ESAR funding for staff bonuses and retention. The last couple of years have been so challenging, and this year is no different. As Dr. Lindeman stated in her press release, burnout and mental health stressors are on the rise. We have been fortunate to be able to discuss these topics at our monthly meetings and recognize that even as a small gesture, this could make a very large impact for many of our staff and families. We, as an association, work to make sure that our staff feels valued and heard in what is happening in the classrooms and in the buildings. We will continue to advocate for the best educators for Waterloo students and hope that you will continue to reach out to us in the same regard. Again, thank you so much for your willingness to serve the Waterloo School community. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baller. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, thank you both for your comments. We appreciate them. And now we will move on to the Item B, which is the consent agenda, beginning with Item B. And I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda for Items B, the minutes of the January tenth, January twelfth, and January nineteenth special board meetings, which we've been having lots of. Item C is the personnel appointments and adjustments. And Item D, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Are any of those board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item C, Charlie, please.
C? All right, are we okay with? Yep, a motion to put Items B and D on the table as is?
Salute.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass six zero. Now we will move on to Item C on page ten, which is the personnel appointments and adjustments.
I move the Board of Education to approve the personnel items as listed.
So move.
Second.
Moving, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion first, sorry.
Yeah, I noticed on here, there's, what, nine, nine resignations that are all in the special needs para or para or behavioral intervention specialists. And I also know, we did hire, there's eight on the hire and two returning, so it kind of netted out, but still, I guess my question is, how should we think about all these resignations, all of which are already effective except one? What's the common denominator among those? And what, if anything, I think we, we had a respectable wage increase this last year and last two years, actually. So what are the big issues?
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's compounded by a number of different things. I think, you know, right now, it's a, it's an issue that's facing many different businesses and organizations as far as individuals resigning. As I look at this list, there's a number of people that have moved. And this happens during this time period as well, that moved, that have family that have gone other places. They found a different job. You know, we actually, I've been on the phone in the last couple of days with some people that have left because they wanted more pay and have, are on their way of coming back. And we, I think Lorene talked to a couple of them today. So I think there's some ebb and flow when we talk about, you know, some of these conversations about where we're at. That's not to say that we don't have a shortage. I mean, that's why we've done some of the things that we've done because we have a significant para shortage. And there's many different reasons why that's the case that we've been working with our WESP. But I do think that some of our conversations around the ESAR funding and things along those lines that we're doing, we had the recent para, recent para referral bonus that I believe, I think three or four people have now interviewed, emailed me now in regards to it. So there's some people coming. Again, this is a really tough time right after, kind of, I would say, the calendar transition time. It's really awkward for some folks. But I think this is something that's been happening, all you're allowed, to your question, that we're faced with this and that we're trying to figure out, you know, how do we, how do we do, how do we use maybe some outside-the-box thinking to alert our staff to different things? I think some of the, the funding that we just did and some of the stuff that we've done from the referral bonus standpoint, that's something that I had shared as far as in October with that type of stuff. And so, not, not that particular type of stuff as far as October, but thinking outside the box. And luckily, we were able to do some things maybe to, that will keep some of our staff here. But it's a challenge. I mean, I think it's a challenge across districts and even in districts in the area as well.
So how are we going about getting the out-of-the-box? Are we collecting those ideas somehow?
I mean, we are. I think that, you know, those are the conversations that we've had with our WESP employee group to see what ideas they have. There's some things that we're still following up on. You know, there's, there's things that we do in regards to training that is that a way that we could compensate them to get additional certificates and things along those lines that we're looking at. I know that Michael and I, Michael sent an email after our conversation Thursday about some additional ideas that we can consider, and we just haven't been able to connect and work through those things. And so I think maybe we can discuss some of those things at finance tomorrow as well.
Okay.
I think the-
It just seems like kind of a chronic situation and we need to-
Absolutely, yeah.
Somehow address it a little more.
I would also tell you, I didn't mean to cut you off. I would also tell you too that, and this is, this goes for, you know, I think we, we had discussed this previously where we had increased staffing at the elementary level to lower class size. And, you know, it happened in some places, didn't happen in others because I've shared with the principals as well. I mean, we want to make sure that we're hiring the best and brightest for our kids. So I'm sure that there are applicants available to go into some of these positions, but our principals aren't just hiring anybody. And so I think that's part of the other change as well. I would say that I've had some conversations within the employers in the area, you know, multi, my spouse included, you know, that there's been a lot of consternation around, you know, having to start a job and not having to maybe get insurance for a month or two months, and we start immediately. And so that has been something that has always been a boon for us as far as what we do differently, maybe from some other employers that I think people are starting to consider and pay attention to. But we're also paying attention to their track record. We're also paying attention to why they're coming to us. And so it's not as easy of saying, you know, can we just pick up, you know, anytime? I was actually going to do Tom, Dick, and Harry, but it's not as easy as picking up anybody from that standpoint. I think we're really trying to focus on who is going to be the best and who is going to continue on with us moving forward. But it's, it's an issue. Thank you.
I just had a quick question about retirement. We have just a few names right now. I mean, are we kind of on track as far as retirement? Are you expecting a whole lot of lists coming as far as names, or?
No, I think we're on the same, we're in the same, same number of retirements. I have gotten some questions in regards to some of the monies that we've discussed and whether or not that would change people. Now, again, I think it's, it's not just the $500 or $500 from a bonus or $500 for signing your contract. It's also, I mean, this is a tough time for educators. And so I think people are really making decisions as far as whether they would come back. And I think we still have some things up our sleeve as far as what we can do from a community standpoint, from a building standpoint, to maybe press on and say, hey, stick with us one more year. But right now, our numbers aren't showing, you know, the mass retirement that we were thinking was going to happen. But again, I think some people are waiting for that contract to drop and some other things. So we still have a couple of months just yet to have those conversations.
What's the date on the contract?
I don't want to give a definitive date, but we are looking at, you know, right after spring break to drop those contracts. We still have yet to do our focus groups and some other things that we plan on doing in February. But we're looking at the date right after spring break. The earliest time period that we could release contracts is after March fifteenth. But we typically do not release those on spring break because we don't want our folks to be worried about, you know, signing contracts. We want them to be focused on, you know, either having a good time or catching up on work or things along those lines.
Can you just share, once the contracts go out, what's the process and the timeline as per law, the days?
Yeah, so, I don't have the date in front of me, but as soon as we drop contracts, it's about twenty-one days for individuals to let us know. For twenty-one calendar days for them to let us know of whether or not they will be returning or whether or not they plan on resigning. And we typically wait a couple of weeks. I think the last couple of years, we've received overwhelming response right away of people returning. We expect that to be the case again. It's really just following up with everyone else to, you know, get them to, you know, sign and do some of those things right away. I think the incentive is going to help tremendously in that regard. And I think this was shared out via email, but for the public and obviously staff mentioning or listening as well. We are going to provide that benefit as far as contract, signing your contract for every single employee. Again, we have to, I want to be careful when I say every single employee, for all of our regular and part-time employees. Because, you know, I know a lot of our employees get letters of assignment. And so with that, we'll be working on some type of letter of intent to ensure that's available to our WSP individuals or APZ individuals as well.
Will they get the signing bonus as soon as they sign?
The plan is to do it as soon as they sign. We're putting in some stipulations as far as, hey, you know, in the event that you don't return, we may, you know, talk about what that's going to look like. But right now, it would be, I want to qualify that. It's not going to be as soon as you sign because I know somebody's going to email me and say, I signed it, where's my check? But it's going to be, you know, as best as we can, at least at the next available pay period or even after that.
Okay, any other questions? And I will say, Kingsley, I, as a board member, appreciate those contracts going back early. I know they out early, but, I mean, they were years ago that those didn't go out till June. You know, May and, end of May and June. So I know we get a little pushback on it's a little too early to know, but I would rather err on the side of being a little early than way late. So appreciate that, so. All right, all in favor of accepting the superintendent's recommendation of the personnel items as listed, please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, vote carries six zero. So now, we will be moving up the Item G from page forty in your board books. Negotiations with Durham for one-year extension of contract. And I'll give a little background on this. Chapter 285.5 of the Iowa code allows school districts to contract with private parties to provide student transportation services. The Waterloo Community School District has utilized a private contractor since July 1 of 1996 and is approaching the end of a multi-year agreement. A three-year contract is the maximum allowed by the Code of Iowa. On June 10, 2019, the Board of Education approved a recommendation from the Facility Committee for a three-year extension to the Durham Schools' services ending on July 31, 2022. The Facility Committee is requesting approval from the Board of Education to begin negotiations with Durham for a one-year extension of the 1920, 19 to 2022 contract for the one year of the 2022-23 school year. So the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the Facility Committee's request to begin negotiations with Durham for a one-year extension of the 2019 to 2020 contract. And we have Michael and Kingsley, I don't see Marty here, but Michael and Kingsley to answer any questions and discuss. And again, this is requesting to begin negotiation. And a motion to-
Salute.
Second. Okay, and discussion?
Uh, yeah. As you said, this was, this was discussed at the facilities, last facilities meeting. And just to set the stage a little bit here, Michael, I think the last three-year contract was an extension of the previous three-year contract. Is that right? And the law at that time said you could have one three-year extension. Is that right?
That was their interpretation of it during, I mean, it's been that way for a long time.
So the interpretation changed a little this last year. This I said, well, you could extend it another year, I think, right? So not knowing whether or not it would be extended in another year, I think the choice tonight is to either extend it a year or go out for a RFP. I think it's really too late to go out for an RFP for this year, so I'm supporting this move. On the other hand-
I'm sorry, Lyle, what's an RFP?
Request for proposals. So it would be like, like just writing a spec, sending it out for bid, and whoever wants to bid on it can, and then you evaluate those bids and award it on that basis. The problem we have right now is bus drivers are hard to get and we're leery about the, what the bids will look like if we go out for bid. On the other hand, we're not in a strong position really to negotiate either for the same reasons. Although we've developed, I think, a working relationship. But my, my point here is, I guess, I certainly think we ought to begin soon, not as part of this recommendation necessarily, but a commitment, if the rest of the board agrees, that we start working on the RFP for the following year. Because number one, we don't know if we can do an extension. And number two, it's probably time to, to go on the open market. And by that time, maybe things will have cleared a little bit. So I'm just kind of wondering if the, if the rest of the board, not as an official part of this motion, but as a normal intention, said we need, because it takes a while. And it seems like whenever we've gone out, it's kind of been a little late. And we've put everybody except the incumbent at a disadvantage, so.
What's your timeframe, Lyle?
Pardon?
What's your timeframe?
Like, set a date, maybe?
I mean, yeah.
Oh, like, have the RFP finished by, I don't know, April?
Out of curiosity, how many other busing companies are active in this part of Iowa? I know Durham kind of has a-
As I understand it, there's three with Iowa contracts.
Okay.
And First Student, we did have First Student.
Yeah, we had First Student prior to this contract.
Okay.
I think we had Durham before that, maybe. But there's three, unfortunately. The other two only have one contract in Iowa, I think, but they could go to two, so.
And that's if they bid, you know? I mean, we may be stuck with one bid. I mean, that, our hands are tied there.
So Lyle, it kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but he did a wonderful job. No, hey, I was waiting patiently, sitting quietly, it worked. You know, and I think he did an eloquent job of kind of expressing where we're at currently. And I think we had talked at the Facilities Committee about, you know, three different things. One, bringing this before the board to discuss moving forward with potentially negotiating an extension, so that's before you tonight. But again, you know, just getting the intent from you as far as the two other pieces as well. And that would be, one, making sure that we have that RFP by April. And I think we, we talked about that being an okay deadline. But then the other piece was also the discussion around just metrics in general that we can continually come to the Facilities Committee, but also the board, through either a board meeting, but also through our weekly update to discuss, you know, how are things going, how are things improving? And I guess, I guess I said three, but there was one more thing as far as, you know, it's predictable, it's preventable. You know, we have some challenges at the beginning of the year. What can we do now to make sure those challenges don't continue to occur? And so those were the four recommendations from the Facilities Committee moving forward. And so while we have the one for tonight, to the, for the board agenda, obviously, if you provide your intent that you're okay with the rest, we've already started working on some of those things.
Well, I think we, you know, invested a lot in, for this year in relationship with Durham to improve. And really, sometimes it takes some time to see if those improvements have really taken hold, you know? And so one of your extensions will really allow us time to see that did the changes we made have a positive impact and, you know, does it impact our decision to go out for, for additional bid or not? You know, and, you know, the other thing is just the, just general supply chains. I'm sure of like any automotive industry, the busing industry probably has supply chain issues right now. So, you know, trying to go out for a change now, we'll probably have a, we probably would be problematic getting equipment, I would imagine, just based on- just based on general trends right now, so.
And this, and this request would not be a, just a duplication of the current contract with the dates changed. It needs to consider the technology adds that are, that are available for both safety and efficiency. And it needs to consider different measuring, maybe different information systems to allow parents and students to know when buses are, are late. There's just a lot of things have changed. And in addition to somehow incorporating the unknowns, such as the last time we wrote this contract, we had no idea we, we wouldn't be going to school for, you know, dozens of days out of the year. So that wasn't covered, and we don't know what's going to come up. But we just need to make it, make it as flexible as we can.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, even like cases like, I know like with charter buses, some of them have onboard internet, which may be not important for a ride home from school. But when we do send our own buses on athletic events and some of our, our conference opponents, those things are pretty far away. But having the ability for the students to use their electronic devices, work on homework on their rides to and from, rather than, you know, have to wait to get home late and then still have, you know, a couple hours of homework to do at the end. Might be, there might be technologies there that we can leverage too, you know, so.
And even with the East High, the new conference, you know, they're going to have a little longer bus rides in some situations. So that would be awesome if we could do that, but. And, and just a question, I don't know if you guys discussed this at facilities, but obviously, I, I think maybe the public or people want to know, like, in ninety-six, what were the mitigating factors that we led from in-house busing to contract busing?
Lyle's the only resident historian.
It was, I think the finances at the time were what drove it. Matter of fact, there was money from the sale of buses. That was set aside, theoretically is still in some bucket somewhere to purchase some new bu- buses.
It was for a long time, it is no longer designated that way.
Michael spent it on us. I think that was the primary thing. And since then, busing is kind of hard to manage. So it's an extra burden on administrative, other districts do it, so it's not impossible. But it's, it's not what some industries would call core business. So you, you concentrate on, on what's most important to you. But I think maybe because of all that, we've kind of underestimated the importance of busing a little bit.
Yeah, you know, it may be good in this, you know, as we look at the future, when we do bid again, is, you know, even does any differences, you know, there's differences on bidding the transportation students for school versus activities as well? You know, cover that piece a little bit different too, some specifics related to that, you know, so.
And I think we have explored with activities, you know, the smaller teams using vans and, and, you know, not the use of the big buses, you know? So I think we have been trying to be more effective in using that too, so.
Efficient and energy efficient and...
Exactly.
Out of curiosity, so when there was the issue with the, the fuel gelling, was that a Durham problem that they didn't switch out the fuel or was that?
Oh, maybe I missed it. What was the question about the fuel?
When, when our fuel froze up and nobody else's did. And Lyle had talked about...
Not, not having the winter blend in.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, those are, Durham, when you contract with a company, they are the ones who are responsible for the maintenance of their buses, the operations of their buses.
That's what I assume, right.
And so we are contracting with them to do their, their work. And so now, since we're contracting with them, if we are, if we have questions about the service that they provide and those kind of things, I can assure you, Marty had long conversations about, you know, the, the history, what happened, really processing that event to make sure that we don't repeat. That, we have over the course of the years, I, I think years back, I think for those of us who have been here a little bit, there was a, an issue a while back, but we had not had that issue for a while. And so there were just some, some things we needed to rectify, and we did. And by we, I mean Dur- us with Durham, so, yeah, that's...
Those were just some things, I guess, that have, I was thinking of, was you go into the negotiation for the extension, you know?
But that would not be a Durham, in this case, in my opinion, that's not a Durham problem because we provide the fuel.
Okay.
And it's coming out of the city, is that right, Mike? Under the city supply that they, you know, it's a mystery to me why they went there.
Oh.
Went and landed there because all emergency vehicles use that, so, you know, we thought...
There were other things there that were with that, so I don't, to choreograph the city's fuel, but that, that was not, that was not the issue. And I, I'm not going to go into that right now, but there, there were some things that were fixed. And so I'm just going to stop right there.
I have one other question. How are kids transported from the high schools to the career center? Are those the buses or those vans?
Through buses.
So what's going on with kids not getting to the career center this week? Like, leaving, the bus is supposed to leave at what, seven thirty, seven thirty-five? And they're getting there at like nine forty-five?
So with due respect, could, could we hold off on that? Because I think we're getting, the, the motion on the table is to vote on the contract, the, to enter into negotiations. But how about if I answered that during superintendent comments?
Okay.
Would that be fair?
Right, yes, and just to include the, our facilities folks in that.
Sure, we can do that, we can have India, Jessie, and Lyle weigh in on that also. I think Dr. Lindemann has quite a list of some bus things she will be discussing a little bit later, so. So thank you for that, Stacy. And so all in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation from the Facilities Committee to begin negotiations with Durham for a one-year extension of the nineteen twenty-two contract? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried six zero. So thank you so much for moving that up on the agenda and allowing that. The next thing is item E on page twenty-one. And I see the infamous Mr. Matt O'Brien heading towards the desk. So we have not seen Matt for a while, let's get this on the table. And I won't go in the background, I'll let you kind of explain it as you're much more elegant than I am on this. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the three-year, five gigabytes G B P S intranet service proposal from MediaCom and sign the applicable agreement.
Salute.
Second. Thank you, all in favor? Not yet. Discussion? Sorry. I want to pass you, Matt, and not let you talk.
If you all want to just vote on it, go, go right ahead, that's, that's fine.
I agree, well, okay. The recommendations, and we will go from there, thank you.
Absolutely. I think the majority of our board members are aware, but for our new board member as well as our public at home, I'll give you just a brief introduction about the E-Rate program. The E-Rate program is a federal program that allows for school districts and libraries to apply for funding to help offset the costs of internet access. So anytime that we go out to bid for internet access, we make sure that we do so under the rules and guidelines and procedures of the E-Rate program. So the proposal in front of you tonight is actually going to replace one of our existing internet services. The district currently has two internet service providers. One of those contracts is up at the end of this fiscal year. So the, the contract before you is just a replacement for that service. So the, the proposal before you is, as Sue said, for five gigabit of service through MediaCom. The, the cost that's noted there, the twenty-two fifty per month. If we're successful in receiving E-Rate funding, which we have been in the past, then we'll actually only pay ten percent of that cost. So obviously, a, a pretty small amount of money for, for the service there.
Um, was there a reason that you didn't want to do the, the ten?
Yeah, I agree with that too.
With just that, such a small difference in price?
It, it is a small difference. We, we look both at our needs as well as the FCC guidelines for bandwidth. And both of those played into that factor. Quite honestly, we don't see ourselves, at least within the next two years, because we will have another contract coming due in another two years. So even though it's a three-year contract, it really, in another two years, we'll have another chance to look at new service. So we really don't see ourselves based off our current usage and upcoming plans needing that. That coupled with FCC guidelines actually call for approximately one gigabit of service per one thousand students. So that actually between the two, the two five-gig services puts us right around what their guidelines call for as well. And we'd like to make sure that we're in line with those guidelines again to increase our chances of getting approved for the funding.
Could you explain like, on page twenty-two, the bid evaluation for five gigs? The cost of service sixty, I understand experience with vendor, vendor reputation. But what is the cost of service for sixty from MediaCom or?
Yeah, so what we do is the E-Rate guidelines specify that we have to come up with bid evaluation criteria because the cost of the service has to be the highest weighted of the criteria that we use to evaluate bids, but it doesn't have to be the sole criteria. So basically, we're, and it's, I apologize, I didn't have room to label that, that column there. But the sixty, ten, thirty, we're basically allocating a hundred points between three categories of things. So sixty towards cost of service, ten towards our experience with the vendor, and thirty with the vendor reputation. Those are all items that, in this case, it didn't matter because the low bidder is actually the recommendation before you. However, there have been times in the past where we've had some random fly-by-night service that's bid that doesn't have a presence in Iowa, that, that actually was the case of one of the services here. So we just want to make sure that we have the opportunity to factor in other factors other than just the cost. So in looking at awarding MediaCom sixty points, basically because they're the low bidder, they get awarded the maximum points. And then the others, we're close to that. I actually have a formula that we've used in the past where we're kind of looking at the standard deviation and basically deduct a third of the possible points per standard deviation. So there's some math behind the scenes, but because the bid spread was really close, that's why we only ended up deducting one point for the other two because the, the bids were relatively close together.
Any particular reason why we didn't, that no, the previous company didn't put a bid in, Ariane?
I, I do not know, quite honestly, we, we did not receive a bit, any communication from them.
Especially since the next motion, recommendation, they did put a bid in. That's, or they, I thought I saw them again somewhere. But yeah, I just thought it was interesting. So what are you kind of expecting as far as service with MediaCom versus what we just had?
Yeah, it's really equivalent. We've actually had MediaCom fiber service in the past, they already have fiber service. They're one of four service providers that already has fiber running into our tech facility. So we're hoping this will be a more seamless transition than we've had with some other providers just because the fiber's already into the facility, that really helps with the installation piece. They, their service they provide in the past, we didn't really have any issues with. It was, it was fairly reliable. I know there's sometimes concerns about that. I will say that their residential service is different than their business service.
You said it, because that was going to be my next comment.
I'll just, I'll just make that comment.
Okay, yeah, okay. That was my, just my wonder, like, okay, thank you.
You bet.
And is there a reason that we use, that you get two different companies? Is that just to make, if one is out, is just having that redundancy?
So the, I, I'm smiling because there are actually some provisions with E-Rate that don't allow for redundancy. Redundancy is best practice, but they don't allow for redundancy. It is actually worked out in our favor that we have had two contracts in the past just because of the nature of the, the way our contracts have rolled and when we've added bandwidth in the past. Because you're absolutely right, Stacy, that it is best practice to have two providers so that if one does go out, we can seamlessly fail over to the other. But from an E-Rate perspective, it's both of those providers are necessary to get to the capacity, which is our goal. So it's, it's kind of a win-win.
So to be clear, if MediaCom does go out, not to say they will, do we have a backup plan?
Yeah, so that's when that other provider, we would be able to fail over to that other provider, yep.
I didn't get a chance to see your expression on the previous conversation, but does E-Rate apply to Wi-Fi on buses?
So, you know, Lyle, I was wondering if that was, that question was going to come up. Right now, it does not. There has been a yearly push towards the FCC to change that definition. There's actually a caveat to that, which is actually also why I smirked because this year, there's some different provisions, which is just a one-year-only program, that technically this year, under a different FCC program called the ECF, it would have qualified, but that program definitely goes away after this year. It was just a one-year program. So we've actually used that program to be able to pay for student internet for those students that have been in need this year to provide hotspots for them. Technically, that also would have allowed for buses, but again, that was a one-year shot. It doesn't allow after this year, unfortunately. Unless they change the rules, of which I know there's been a push every year, they just haven't done it yet.
Thank you.
And how are we sitting on hotspots as far as across the district wide and?
Yeah, we're, we're doing good. I can get you, I don't have the exact numbers in, in front of me. I will tell you that we did a big push this fall to do some reconciliation process of making sure that those checked out are actually being used. So because of that, our numbers are actually down from what we were providing last year just because we've really tried to push towards that accountability piece. But certainly, we have hotspots available for anyone who is qualified and requested one. Then we've been able to provide that under the ECF funding.
Perfect. Any more questions?
Well, if that funding though goes away, the one you're talking about, it goes away next year. So what happens with the hotspots then that were?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to have some conversations around what the future direction looks like. If that's something that we want to continue to provide as a district. Obviously, we still have a couple years left of Essor and other dollars that would be available that would also qualify for those things. So that funding cliff doesn't necessarily exist yet. It's just the ECF portion of the funding that goes away. I'll also say through some grants that we've gotten, we also have a number of free lines of, it's not a limited service, but of a limited bandwidth that regardless of whether we paid for it, we would still be able to provide because of a T-Mobile grant that we've gotten.
And I would just add on that, that's, I mean, I think that's a, a fair question. I would say that it doesn't just apply to this. There are all kinds of things that we have in our districts that are grant-funded. And when, I mean, sometimes it's people. You know, we, we hire a certain staff member on a, on a grant for a one-year, two-year, three-year grant. So what we do as a district is always really try to look at what it is that we're funding with that and then prioritize the work, the people, the staff, the, the supplies, the hotspots, whatever it is, to make sure that we're looking at what is our priority. As Michael has said a thousand times, we have to put our money to work for, you know, where we need it. And so we can't just say, well, that grant went away, so we wouldn't have it. So I just wanted to take that opportunity to amend that to the broader context. Our job is to make sure that we're looking at the item. If one particular grant goes away, then we either look at Essor, or we look at another grant, or we take it out of general. We move things around, you know, sometimes in a ten-year period, they might be funded by five different things throughout that. So just a broader answer.
Thank you.
We use creative ways to, always to fund things, and Michael's very good at, very ethical creative ways.
Somehow duct tape and chewing gum doesn't do it anymore.
Not quite so much anymore, or the paper clips together, but, okay. All in favor of approving the three-year internet service proposal from MediaCom? Please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried six zero. Now we will move on to the second portion of Mr. O'Brien. And that is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education approve the purchase of network equipment from Goldfield Telecom L.C. at a total cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. Wireless access points from Acer Wireless at a total cost of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. And voicemail system and services from Tri-City Communications at a total cost of fifty-three-thousand-nine-fifty-five and twelve cents. Salute.
Second.
And thank you very much, and discussion.
So there are really two parts to this proposal. The first has to do with our annual network refresh cycle. We always are in the process of making sure that our backbone of our network is, is serviceable, both serviceable and up-to-date in providing the capacity that our students and our, our staff need. So that also ties in with the E-Rate program. The E-Rate program has a provision which also allows schools to apply for funding to support equipment that will support our network system. So again, the, the network portion, both the wired and wireless network portion is in conjunction with the E-Rate program. So those first two price tags that you saw in the motion, those are fairly big numbers. But if we're successful in receiving E-Rate funding, then again, we'll only end up paying a portion of, of those dollars that are listed. are listed. So this year's proposal for network upgrades will actually include a couple of things. Part of this proposal is the network equipment that we're anticipating needing for the WCC expansion, for the new building that goes there, so, and working with the architects and the plans, we've estimated network capacity needs off of that, and figured out the equipment that we'll actually need to purchase. There's also some equipment that will go to a variety of buildings this year, predominantly, we're looking at upgrading our high schools, but there's a few targeted upgrades at some of our other schools as well, that's part of that proposal. And I did want to highlight that because this is an E-Rate purchase, we're actually doing this kind of ahead of time, so these will actually be fiscal year twenty-three purchases that I'm asking the board to approve now, because by you approving that now, then that allows me to file for E-Rate funding, to then hopefully offset some of those costs. The second part of the proposal is actually not part of the E-Rate process, it's, it's a plain old boring phone system upgrade, we actually did some phone system upgrades last year as part of the annual free, refresh process, we didn't do the voicemail system at that time, our voicemail system is actually thirteen years old, we're needing to look at replacement, so the, that's the second piece of that, is the, the licenses and also services that we would need to replace our, our voicemail system, that will be out of this fiscal year, we're still looking at the timeline, we may wait until the summer to actually do the cutover, but the, the purchase would be yet, out of this fiscal year.
Is there a yearly cost then with the voicemail as well, or is this just it?
Yeah, so there is, the, the, I'm trying to, let me see how that's actually denoted here, the... The software assurance piece, well, and the first year's a little complicated, so it's not fair to look at that. I will tell you, part of the reason why we actually are looking at that is because of the yearly maintenance costs, we did with, if we kept our current system, then it, it's about a, somewhere between a two-and-a-half and a three-year payoff with the maintenance that we would be paying on our current system versus the price tag for this replacement. It's, I was hoping it was itemized a little differently in this bill, but because it's, it's kind of a co-termed thing with the rest of our phone system, because we're doing an integrated package with our phone system, so all that to say, that will be probably a four to, somewhere in the four-thousand-dollar range, I think, is the recurring maintenance cost portion of the actual voicemail system, starting with the next year.
And if our current system lasted thirteen years, what are you, what are you expecting from this one, what do you think?
Thirteen years was a long time, quite honestly, we really pushed that to the max. I will say, it lasted thirteen years, though mid-that cycle, we did do a hardware refresh, so it was kind of the same software for thirteen years, that then we did do a hardware refresh about midway through that. This will actually be running on our virtualized environment, so that'll allow us, from a hardware perspective, because hardware wouldn't last thirteen years, we're hoping that the software, keeping maintenance on it, which allows us to receive updates and whatnot, that portion of it probably has the potential of, of lasting thirteen years, though in technology, it's so hard to look that far out, that I, I would hesitate to commit to anything, quite honestly.
Are you expecting any supply chain concerns right now, if any is coming in, particularly with the projects going on?
With the initial network equipment, that is absolutely a concern, that honestly was a concern even with this year's equipment, we ended up opening Lowell with using some spare older equipment that we had because of delays with the supply chain, so that really is our fallback, is because these are upgrades, and we have some additional older equipment, that worst-case scenario is, we still have equipment we could put in those buildings, it just wouldn't be the latest spec that we're moving towards. So, yes, potentially is the short answer.
Anything in contracts that help support us, the material delays, or?
Well, the, the problem, so it's kind of a, a timing problem, because with E-Rate, we can't, because it's next fiscal year E-Rate, we can't actually issue that until fiscal year twenty-three, there's some timing provisions with that, and generally, manufacturers or vendors are, once you get in line, then you're in line type of thing, so even if I, if I were to order right now, then we wouldn't be able to receive E-Rate funding, so that's why instead, we're waiting, and we'll, we'll probably place that order direct, right on July first, hope that we get in line, but like I said, if we don't receive the equipment in time, which who knows what the supply chains will look like by this fall, or next fall, when we're, this coming fall, when we're actually needing that equipment for WCC, then we do have a backup plan available.
So is there any cybersecurity considerations on this, the software associated with this, and where do we stand in general on our protection?
I could talk for hours about that, so you probably, I, I won't, I won't be too long-winded with that answer, the short of it is, is the, the network equipment that we're purchasing does have some components which actually fit into some of the projects that we have going right now with cybersecurity, notably just, they're called access control systems, or ACLs, access control lists, basically segmenting the network so that traffic from one location can only flow to where it actually should get to elsewhere on the network, and doesn't just have a wide-open network, is the oversimplification of that. So there are some components of that, that will help us with that particular project, that's definitely an ongoing area that is top of mind, that's what keeps me up at night, we have a number of projects associated with that, and likely before the end of the year, though, most of those are, are just projects that involve our staff and configuration changes, or smaller purchases, but I do have one pending project that likely will be coming before the board, we're just not ready for that piece yet, so stay tuned.
Quick question, this is the, and when you were talking about the expansion of the Waterloo Career Center and high schools and other district schools, my question is, will we come back with another bid for other schools for their equipment, or how many, when you say other school?
Yeah, so we, E-Rate actually has a, a five-year cycle of kind of funding that's available, so what we typically do with any, we don't like to, we wouldn't have the capacity, quite honestly, to rip and replace our entire network in one summer, so we do it in kind of a rotation process, so we're kind of constantly, as, as equipment ages and gets past that five-year mark, then we're looking at targeting those schools for replacements, kind of for that upcoming E-Rate cycle, so WCC is obviously new equipment, but for the schools that I mentioned that are receiving upgrades, they're due for basically their equipment to be replaced, so yes is the short answer, but we don't do it all at once, it'll be kind of the staggered, every year, you'll get used to seeing some sort of network proposal before you, as we look to leverage E-Rate funds to kind of divide out our network upgrades.
So I know that you said that the other stuff is for twenty-three, but is the voicemail, you're going to do that now, is that what I'm understanding? Is, that's?
Correct, that's yet this fiscal year, we may do the cutover in the summer, but it'll be at this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
And that makes sense to hopefully affect the lease lines at the least important time, maybe.
Yeah, so, for sure, we, we, we definitely look at that anytime we're doing upgrades, tech is always fun, because you get to plan those after-hours and non-peak-time type things, so.
Perfect, all right, any more questions? All right, Matt, you did a great job, as normal, all in favor of accepting the superintendent's recommendation for the purchase of network equipment, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried six-zero. Thank you again, we'll anxiously await your cybersecurity.
We'll, we'll continue to chat, it's definitely an important topic.
There were some, there was a news story this morning with, someone had written some C-shanties to some security problem in IT, I think this ran on NPR this morning, it was pretty funny, so you might want to look that up.
I'll have to check that out.
Yeah, that'll be your number-one hits for you and your friends, I guess.
Are you ever a guest speaker at Career Center on this subject?
Yeah, we actually do, so a couple of, myself and a couple of staff, there's actually also at the high schools, East and West, have kind of an intro-to-computer career class, so every semester, we usually go out there, and they kind of have it broken out into different topics, between cybersecurity, server admin, sysadmin, network admin, that type of thing, so, yeah, for sure.
Thank you again, Matt. Okay, now we're going to move on to item H on page forty-one, and this is the SBRC request for funding related to the twenty-one-twenty-two SWVPP increased enrollment, and we have Michael Coughlin here tonight to explain this all to us, and I'll give the recommendation on the table, that the Board of Education approves as part of the district's response to the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, the district's administration has authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee for funding related to FY twenty-two SWVPP increased enrollment in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, please, Michael?
This is an action that is a little bit unique, because you've seen SBRC action several times to apply for something to get authority to backfill it with cash reserve. This is statewide voluntary preschool program, so we get funding for those students that qualify for that, and this has been a unique year because our funding always comes from the previous year enrollment. So when we're looking at twenty-one-twenty-two, it was the fall of twenty, when we took enrollment count of what constituted the funding for the pre-K program. That was the fall, a lot of young students stayed home. So, the legislature knew this was coming, it's been talked about for quite a while, but the, the vehicle of fulfilling this took a little time to get everything in place, but that first paragraph really explains it in a nutshell, that because of the shortage in the fall of twenty, funding for twenty-one-twenty-two, we would have more kids coming back more likely, and the funding not following them, because that was the year that kids stayed home. So what the legislature passed was saying, we will not only give you the authority that you missed out on, we will give you the cash of the students of the difference between the fall of twenty, and if you go down to the bottom calculations, so this is for pre-K for twenty-one-twenty-two, what normally funds that is the enrollment in fall of twenty, so you count the kids, four-hundred-and-twenty-three, divide that in half, because it's only half-funded, so you have two-hundred-and-eleven-point-five students times the district cost, and it was a little over one-point-five million dollars. So then, when we counted this year, if there was more kids coming in the fall of twenty-one, which we had, it went from four-twenty-three to four-sixty-three, so there was forty more bodies, but since there's, since there's half, half-funding, it's counted as twenty full FTE times a seven-two-two-seven, which is the district cost per pupil, assigned by the state under a, a long formula issue, that's where the one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty dollars comes from. So they made a one-year adjustment because of the kids that stayed home in the fall of twenty, when we counted that enrollment, which applied to, to this fiscal year of twenty-one-twenty-two, and the legislature said, you're not just getting authority, you send in your request based on these numbers, and this is what the state all calculated after the certified enrollment was done, so they did all of these calculations to say, what was it in the fall of twenty, what was it in the fall of twenty-one, so that difference then generated an actual payment from the state out of Essor Two State Dollars, that they were helping all the districts recover from the amount of students that stayed home in fall of twenty. So we will send in a letter on approval of the plan, just saying that it, it's for the increased enrollment in the current year because of the statewide voluntary preschool program, and that's what they need to then send us a check this year for one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand.
Does this mirrors statewide as far as numbers kind of, you know, being?
I didn't look into that, because, and, but it certainly wasn't all the districts that had more enrollment in twenty-one than twenty, but most, and it was all over the board as far as, the only one that sticks out in my mind is Des Moines, and they got eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars because of this, and bigger districts have different setups and trends of enrollment, and I didn't look into all of that.
Or different behavior trends during COVID, too, as far as enrollment, so.
Dr. Lamy, you can maybe answer this question, and Michael, you can also, I'm just curious, what are the numbers comparable to like twenty-nineteen as far as preschool enrollment?
It was five-hundred-and-eighteen kids.
Okay.
So it did go down about ninety-five kids, and then bounced back forty.
Got it.
So are we, do you think, are we anticipating that, that that will go back up again? I mean, this is still kind of a year where I see maybe parents waiting, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I know that they are gearing up, registration will start very soon, and I don't have the exact date, do you know, the first of February, so, and I think that's usually when it starts pretty much every year, so, yep, so we are working on that, I know that today, we had a meeting where, with the new Lowell, and it has an early childhood part, which we didn't, you know, we didn't move the students mid-year for that portion of the building, but we had a conversation today, we're just trying to make sure we know exactly which rooms and which programs will be going there, and so we had that conversation, but we found so many times, our conversation was hinging around, we really need to see what enrollment is going to do, so we have multiple Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, depending on what it is, so we're really waiting for that to go, so thanks, Dr. Mohorn, for reminding me of the date, I had forgotten that.
Would we end up in kind of the same situation next year, then, if there's a big bump as far as not having the authority?
I think they, my guess, would they, would be, would analyze how much of a bounce-back there was, and is it necessary to do a program like this, because we also, the districts that can afford it with their Essor money can use Essor money, because that is an issue with dropping ninety-five and bouncing back forty, we don't have enough to fund pre-K for this year, so we will probably use part of the Essor money to backfill that, so that's also another opportunity for districts to use that.
Well, and we didn't have, we had diversity planning earlier, which could impact some of the numbers, too, so.
Yep, yeah, there's a lot of things.
That's unbearable, sir.
Yep.
Have you heard of any, like, debates, since this is a voluntary preschool, you know, pushback as far as paying back districts, when it's a voluntary preschool program, not a mandatory?
I don't know if I know, I haven't heard anything, but I don't know how that would, how the argument would.
Yeah, I don't think so, I think for the most part, the state is very supportive of preschool and, and quality preschool, so.
Yeah, because this is also part of the funding, is then passed on to some of the private providers, that they have to, and maybe Stephanie, I'm sure Stephanie knows more about this than I do, but of, as they qualify as a certified, if that's what you call it, certified private pre-K, they have to adapt to the standards that the state is looking for, so when that all came to be, what I remember is, they didn't want to squeeze out all of those private providers, so they said, if you can be a qualified provider, we will keep you in the pipeline, and it passes through us to them.
And I believe, I'm not, don't quote me on the numbers, but I believe we have eight partner sites, am I close on eight? I think it's eight different partner sites of preschool programs that are, that are following the quality- Um, I think it's eight different partner sites of preschool programs that are, that are following the quality preschool standards, Q P.
I think it's eight or nine, and actually, we just did one of the payments, so we just were doing that.
Yep.
Yeah, we get those like annually, right?
Yep, quite a few. Yep, you will get those, those partnerships that you will approve. And then we, we don't provide the instruction for the most part, as long as they have a certified teacher that meets the, the standards. But we have had times when we have a teacher who's a traveling teacher who will go and do a portion of the instruction to meet the hours, and then they may travel on to another one. So we work with partner sites to make sure that our kids are getting quality preschool.
And we've talked about, like, curriculum too, that we help them with that, right, Dr. Mohorn? So I, I was just gonna say that I think it's wonderful that you've been able to get all the partners. I think the community embraces that. So thank you. I know it's a lot of work.
Well, and it gives the community options, you know, where, just options to serve the needs of their kids, which, what we're here for. So thank you, Dr. Mohorn. Okay, any more questions on that? Thank you, Michael. All right, all in favor of accepting the superintendent's recommendation for the funding related to FY twenty-two statewide voluntary preschool program increased enrollment? Please state, aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried six, zero. Thank you very much. Now we move on to exhibit I, which is on page forty-two. And this is not an action item. It's for information only, and we see Aqui coming up. And this is Board Policy Changes First Reading. And so we will let you take the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so this is just for information only, first reading. Just for your awareness, there are five policies here that the Policy Review Committee has recently addressed in deep conversation around changes, proposed changes that we'd like to see implemented. And so it'll go to a second reading at the next Policy Review Committee. At that point, then be presented back to you for approval. If there are any policies here that, based on your reading prior to this evening, you'd like us to pull for further conversation at the next meeting, please let me know.
Is there any way we could just, just look at one oh nine again and with the next time we meet, just to make sure it's bulletproof? Is that okay?
Sure.
I mean, I know we already put a lot into it, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, my, my question on one oh nine is exactly the bottom paragraph there. It's within the discretion of the Board to address complaints. And it will only consider, and the Board will only consider whether to address complaints if they are in writing, signed, da, 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 da. The Board is not obligated to address complaint and may defer. How does that process work? Does that come to a Board vote whether to address the complaint or defer to the superintendent? How does, how does that work?
Pam, would you be interested in talking a little bit about that one?
Sorry, I'm actually looking up another policy here, so, okay, what was the question again?
Just how the execution of the bottom paragraph there, it seems like the complaints come to the Board, and then the Board decides whether to consider the complaint itself or to defer to the superintendent to, to address the complaint. So, and my question is, how does that all work? Does, is the Board notified, and does everybody get a vote on whether to accept it or defer?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, um, Dr. Lindemann, sorry. That would be all part of, all under, that grievance process. So if I'm understanding your question correctly here, that it's gonna go through that process, but then it would go to the Board once it reaches that level. So the Board generally, right, because then that would go into that close, if I'm understanding this correctly, that's gonna go into that closed session then where we would meet to address? Is that how you're reading it?
So what I'm, this is an interesting question because we didn't really talk about the process behind the language. So maybe this is one that as we, when we pull it back, we can talk about the process and just make sure that.
Clarify that.
Yeah, that we're clear on exactly what that process looks like, so that the language is aligned with the process.
Because it refers back to, down below, sorry, um, the cross-reference. It's referring to four oh three, five, one, which is the Resolution of Employee Complaints, which is gonna lay out the process.
But it's weird because you don't know, like, not every complaint is an employee complaint, you know? So that's where it gets, I mean, it could be a policy complaint, you know?
Or a book complaint, banning a book.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the process is different.
When it says the discretion of the Board, my real question is, does that mean like the President and Vice President? Or does that mean the whole Board? Are we even informed? Is every member of the Board informed of the situation? And then is it a majority vote of the Board on whether to, to hear the complaint themselves? Or to say, Superintendent, you hear the complaint and your decision is final?
Well, and who it goes to, because there's things that are bounced to individual Board members sometimes. Not personnel complaints, but when we're talking about masks or some, just whatever, you know? So there, there are a lot of, I guess, balls in the air.
Sure.
Well, and I think Aqui said it right in that they need to just readdress that actual, I think that's nail on head.
Well, and we'll look at the reg too, because maybe that has the process in it.
Yeah, so the, the note is just to take this back and ensure that the committee has taken a closer look at it in the context of process. Kingsley will be in that conversation again, and that'll be a helpful perspective on, on this particular policy as well. So noted, and we'll take it back and recognizing that we just want to ensure that it's aligned with exactly what the process looks like. Wonderful. Thank you.
I think that sounds good. Any other questions for Aqui?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, now we are moving on to the non-action items and Superintendent's report for Dr. Lindemann, please.
For sure, thank you. So just a few things tonight of interest, I think. First of all, I don't know if, you know, you might have noticed Mr. Bocchway left halfway through. And I just wanted to clarify, that's a good example of a partnership that we have. He is actually leaving here tonight to go serve on the interview team for the, the University of Northern Iowa, the Dean of Education. And so they're hiring a new person, and so they have involved us in the process. They actually did a few years ago when they, was the last time that, that was the last time they hired. And so we really appreciate that. I know Dr. Mohorn and I are meeting the candidates tomorrow morning at eight o'clock and, um, you know, having a conversation about some of the work going on in Waterloo schools. And then they're taking a tour of the Waterloo Career Center, and then they're traveling to Irving Elementary to, to do a tour. And I think that's really great that the, that the candidates get a chance to meet us and, and learn more about the district. And I think it's a good example of, and really, I would, I would also mention Hawkeye Community College. They have also invited, uh, involved us on different key positions, and we've really appreciated that. I actually served on the committee when we hired the new, um, the new president, Dr. Holcomb. And so I just thought, I, you know, I, people might have seen him walk out, and I just thought it might be worthy of just mentioning that, you know, that's just a great partnership, so. Did you see him walk out? I wondered if people thought maybe he was just like, I don't know.
I thought he was working on the Durham contract.
No, no, no.
I asked Lyle if we had lost him, and Lyle set me straight, saying, that's why we moved item G forward, so that.
Because he needed to go do his interview, yes. So that is great. Just a good, a good example there. Second thing I would just mention, we have a, an interesting unprecedented situation kind of happening right now, and so I just wanted to mention it for the public. We actually just, even as I was sitting here, we had an email that came out to parents that was talking about the busing situation. We have a, we have a, you know, people know that the weather's going to get cold over the next couple of days, and we had a, a couple of issues converge with the, not only the, the cold weather coming up, and that requires lots of monitoring on our place, you know, whether we're gonna do a late start or whether we, you know, or, or nothing. We monitor that really quite often and, and work with the, um, other superintendents, but.
No, she really does. Like, she gets up at like eight in the morning.
Yep, many, many times. We are, we're on the phone quite often. But, so we actually have, um, right now, we have a situation going on where there's some COVID going through some, with some of the bus drivers. And so we are finding ourselves for the first time, really in the last couple of years, with a significant shortage. And I'm not just talking a couple people, because we deal with that, you know, we have, we have principals who are gone. We have superintendent might be gone, bus driver might be gone. This is different. Um, this is, is a significant number. And so I just thought maybe it would be interesting to read, this is, I actually got this as a parent of a Waterloo schools person, but as bus riders, and it just says Waterloo families with bus riders. We want to make sure that you are aware, we are, we want to make you aware that we are dealing with a significant bus driver shortage over the next couple of days due to COVID. And there, there are protocols that they have to follow as well with the quarantine and the five days. And so they, um, they have their process through Durham. This shortage coupled with frigid forecasted temperatures is causing concerns for Tuesday and Wednesday and will likely cause delays for certain routes. We will need to make some changes to routes and driver assignments over the next hours, and we'll communicate these changes to the impacted families. This is an unprecedented situation with a surprising number of factors that we're needing to consider as we determine our best course, course of action. Please know that we are working to finalize a plan that prioritizes student safety and ensures access to learning. Again, impacted families will receive an update, you know, later this evening is, is our best hope. And then, um, you know, if other things happen throughout the night, we've got, actually, our phones are gonna be staffed all night long with drivers if, you know, something happens. This is, is definitely different. So, you know, I, I just bring that up, not only for awareness and, and Andrew.
And that completely answers the question that I had, so thank you.
Okay, good. So that, that might be, you know, one of the issues. But I also think it's maybe a good example of the impact of COVID. You know, the, this adds, it, this is a, a situation that probably, I mean, it's never happened. I've been here seventeen years, and I've never, I don't remember this. We've had it, we had it a couple, uh, I guess, last year, we had it at one of the buildings. It cost us to have conversations, but to, to do this, and, and Dr. Mohorn can confirm this. So we spent probably, I know this seems like just a small task. Okay, we've got drivers gone, we've got some cold weather coming. This really, we probably had about six to eight people working on this for multiple hours today. It seems small, but when you're talking about student safety, it took hours to make sure that we had all the information. It, you know, at one point, we've got a, a couple of buses that are maybe going to do some specific tasks. You know, if there's some policies that if a student is homeless and they move, if they're, if they, if they meet the definition of that, we actually transport them back. And so we've got some buses that we're using and some drivers that we're using. We've actually changed some of that up, so we're, we're doing whatever we can. We called other districts, and we were, you know, maybe borrowing some equipment or checking on drivers. And so we really, um, I, I won't show everybody this, but I mean, we have a, we had a whole list of, you know, here's issues that we, you know, here's things we can do, you know, getting awareness out to parents. We can, you know, we started calling retired drivers who still have an active CDL who maybe drove for Durham and, and would meet the qualifications. We spent hours on this. And I, I, again, I bring it up not only so you know kind of what's going on, but second of all, it's a great example of how we have to work differently from what we've done before. We spent hours, didn't we, trying to go through every single detail to make sure that we could continue learning and that. And especially when you add the, the cold, it's a, it's a safety issue, and we want to make sure that, you know, parents know. We also have dispatched some of our current Waterloo school staff who will be reporting to the, to the Durham office, and they will be sitting there with phones and helping to dispatch and take phone calls in case the bus is late. We want to make sure that we get parents notified immediately, your bus is running ten minutes late, your bus is running twenty minutes late. You know, we had this situation today where we had a couple routes, to be honest, that were running up to an hour late. And so we are doing the best we can. We are trying very hard to make sure that learning continues. It is not, again, it is not thousands of kids. It is, you know, maybe one bus route running an hour behind. I think today we had three bus routes that were running significantly behind. It is, it is work, and we are happy to do it because it is the work that we do. But it just, it was a good opportunity maybe to just let people know. We're not asking for empathy in any way, shape, or form. That is not the purpose of me bringing this up. It's just a good example of, of how things have changed. So working on that.
That is then why the, the issues with transporting to the Career Center.
Yeah, there, well, there's a couple things around, yep, there's a couple things around that with some schedules. But yes, we have had some significant issues with COVID. And as is the case with, you know, organizations or businesses, sometimes you get a proportionate, a disproportionate number of, of people who in one, you know, one building, one organization, one business that end up contracting COVID, and it really impacts the operations for that until it cycles through. You know, luckily, we're not, you know, luckily, right now, I guess we've had, um, this, this COVID is certainly different from previous versions or variants of COVID, but that doesn't mean that it's not, you know, it, it definitely is still having an impact. So I guess that's my point. So it's still COVID. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Last thing I think I wanted to ta, oh, well, I guess second. East-West bas, a basketball game is, is this Friday. As people know, we play each other twice. One time we play at East, and the next time we play at West. And the second of the two series is this Friday night, and so I would just urge everybody to come out. Dr. Mohorn, this one's at West, right? Last time we went to East. Sometimes I get confused on which one we went to. So, yeah, we were at East last time, and so we'll be at West on Friday night. So come out and, and enjoy some great basketball. We love to see people. It's always a really, really great crowd, so.
And then you can enjoy, like, both pep bands will be there, so.
Wonderful, yep. I have a pep band player myself, so I will be there. I love it. I would be there anyway, but that's just a perk. And then my last thing is, I just wanted to respond. I, Jody was up here talking a little bit about the, um, the dollars that we gave out. And I would urge people, I would drive, drive people to the Courier article that came out. I thought Andrew did a great job of covering the Board meeting during which we had this, um, had this approved. And, and districts do it in different times, sometimes in different ways. Some districts do it with, you know, maybe it's a payment for extra hours. We did it as a bonus pay, which really meant, meant that we needed to bring it to the greater Board. So I know some people will say, well, wait a minute, this district didn't bring it to the Board. It just is really how you're paying the money out that requires different responses. We, we did it this way, and we wanted the Board to vote on it. We had, I, I didn't count them. I, I did mention, I met with Jody earlier today, and I said that I think I probably heard from, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty staff members who were just really full of gratitude for the Board. And they asked me, multiple people asked me to express my gratitude toward the Board for your decision and also for, to the district for bringing it to you on, on their behalf. And so I just thought that was just a really, a great thing to do, you know, reminder. It wasn't, if, again, I dragged people to the article because I thought it was, it answered a lot of the questions. You know, it's, it's SR money. SR was really designed, um, the SR dollars were really designed to help us, you know, mitigate the spread of COVID, to address the issues with COVID, to respond to COVID. And that's really what we're doing, and, and it's, it's trying times. I mean, go back to the bus thing. I mean, we're just having to work in completely different ways with topics that have never come up before. So that was just, um, we had lots of appreciation. It's, and it absolutely is part of a broader package that we're, we're doing. Some districts have done, you know, the money at one time, and then that's it. We're not doing that. I mean, we're really staying at it. I, I think the, on January fourteenth, we did a flexible day where we allowed many of our staff members to work from home. The work was done. It, it really felt good. And so, and there's other things, the retention bonus coming up. And there's just, there's quite a few things where we're really looking at a lot of flexibility. So it feels good to do that. I think that a lot of that will continue into years forward. I mean, it's not just right now. We're learning some things. We're using the money to try out some things that, you know, we, maybe we've been hesitant, for whatever reason, um, to try. And I think, you know, we're getting a chance to try it out and see if it works, and, you know, with a minor tweak, we can do this. And so I think a lot of that, you know, some of these things will, will continue into the future. So I, it feels good, it feels right, and we were happy to do that. And I'm, I'm grateful that it was, um, you know, met with such favor from our, from our staff. And honestly, from our community, I appreciate that too. So with that, I will close out and say, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lindemann. And tonight, we're going to start with India. Yes?
Yeah, switch it up, okay. Actually, don't have anything. Thank you, though.
Jessie?
I'll just give a, a thank you for all the people gonna be involved this week with the superintendent interviews here. A lot of people dedicating time to help us through this process. And we appreciate people are willing to, you know, give a little bit of their time to help us make the right decision for our school districts, so.
Thank you. Stacy?
Uh, jumping off what Jessie said, I, I appreciate two people that have contacted us, you know, either before or since the names have come out. I told, I told the, the hi, our hiring gurus that this is the biggest decision other than getting married and having my two ki, or three kids, God, I almost forgot one. Yeah, that this is like the biggest decision I've ever had to make. I mean, this, and like buying a house was our own money, so this is like big, you know? So please know that this is not something that anybody is taking lightly. We're taking in everything we possibly can, and it's a big deal to us, yeah. And then one other thing, I, there was a Courier article regarding FAFSA that a lot of seniors have not been doing their FAFSA. And even if you don't know what you're gonna do next year, talk to your counselor, do the FAFSA. You may end up deciding that there's some post-secondary education that you want to do if you can qualify for a Pell Grant. It's, it's always worth going through the process just to see what comes up. So I think the number was down to something like fifty-one percent or so. It had dropped significantly.
Definitely it's a first-hour scholar program. They, if you're doing in-state and community colleges and some of the programs, they should be proud for that. That's, that's, that first-hour scholar has been a really amazing program, so.
It is. It is, it really is, and but even it like if, um, you know, my my daughter is at Hawkeye right now, and, uh, just the 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 state loans and stuff, it's all just very helpful. Um, and you don't know what you're gonna get until you apply, so, um, I just, uh, encourage parents to, it's it's kind of a pain, not gonna lie. Once you've done it once, though, it's a little better, so. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go with, to Janelle next.
Um, someone said at the beginning of this meeting that there was a class watching, and I'm gonna assume that that was on, uh, oh, the class that left, well, okay. Well, what I wanted them to know is that, uh, this, this meeting may have seemed very long and boring to them. However, it's really a quick, quick version of everything that happened since our last meeting. And hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours went into preparing these proposals for us, getting the bids, the folks who prepared, who came up to speak tonight, um, all of the work that went into all the spreadsheets and all of that stuff, and it including, you know, the time that we spend studying this and thinking of our questions before we come in, that this meeting is just really the tip of the iceberg that happens. So I wanted students who are interested in governance to know that, you know, um, a meeting is not everything that is happening. And oftentimes, these things have been so, so studied by the time we get here, um, that, you know, the the meeting is just the vote, and and we wouldn't even bring it, maybe bring it forward to everyone if we didn't have agreement on things. So I wanted to educate those students, but I see that they have left, so that's very sad.
They waited too long. Okay, Lyle.
Yeah, I just wanna add my appreciation to the extraordinary persistence and, uh, effort of all the staff to keep the system going and in some fairly trying times to continue, keep the learning, uh, going as well. You know, as with any organization, every employee has their role. And so it depends on every employee doing their their job for success, and I think we're seeing that across the board. But on the other hand, or in addition, we just need to make sure every every employee feels fulfilled because that's that's really what drives most people, and I think we maybe underestimated that in the past, so.
Okay, thank you very much. And I will also echo on Dr. Lindemann, if you do have a bus rider, be sure to look for communication tonight via email or phone because.
Into tomorrow.
In into tomorrow also because, um, it's just, you know, a lot of people will say to me, well, why is it such a safety thing? Because some kids are at a bus stop for over a half hour or forty-five minutes with nothing more than a North Face or a small jacket. So, and it's cold, it's really cold. So maybe it doesn't affect your child as a bus rider, but it affects children in our district, which is critical to all of us, so. Yes, and dress your child warmly, if you would, you know, hats, mittens, double layers. And if you don't have a really warm coat, just put on three shirts and then the coat, you know? I mean, just because it is cold and brutal, and we we just want, um, our kids to be safe. And and, um, and I do, for the bus drivers that are out, I offer my, um, quick get well, and we need you, we need you greatly. And, um, I hope that, um, you just don't get COVID too bad, and you're back to work, um, because our students need you, and we need you, so. And with that, our next board meeting will be on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth at five P M. So we may bring, anybody bring their significant other or spouse if they want, and maybe we'll have a, maybe we'll have a conversation heart for you, but, yeah, maybe candy from the board president, that might happen. But anyway, that will be our next board meeting at five o'clock, um, beginning February fourteenth on Valentine's Day. So with that, um, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.